Can I call this, order the October 2nd, 2012 meeting and say the Board of Education, everybody please stand and join me in a pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. DeAndrea, has this meeting been approved by the Board of Education?
Yes, it has.
Make it a roll call vote.
Mr. Bafta.
Here.
Mrs. Backo.
Here.
Mr. Vashada.
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Here.
Mr. Sayak.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Rukuya.
Here.
Mrs. Krab.
Here.
And Mr. Mackinon.
President.
The executive session agenda this evening, attorney-client privilege, voluntary termination, S E A member, job abandonment, S E A member, Saebul War Memorial, high school student activities, fiscal anomaly, use of facilities, negotiation, Saebul Principal Association, Saebul Education Association, student discipline, HIB reports number one through five, personnel, agenda items.
Thank you. Everybody who should have received a store copy of September 18th, 2012, regular executive session meetings, do you want to have any changes or questions or comments on the agenda? Excuse me, on the minutes of September 18th. Mrs. Backo.
Question on the executive session?
I don't think.
Can you hear us out there?
We have a chance to turn off.
Not bad. It's not loud enough.
I'll turn it off.
Thank you.
He's going to turn it.
Is that better? One, two, three. Better? A little bit better. Yeah, I think it's working out there.
Thank you, Mrs. Backo. Okay. That'll be good. Yes.
On the executive session, there's, maybe they'll mention, this is not, this is not working at all. I don't think.
I can check.
Sure. Hello? Maybe we'll just share. Okay, we're cool now. It's probably just my microphone. On the executive session, there was no mention of Mr. Brown attending, so if you could just add that, that he came in later.
I'll add that.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a motion to accept and file the meeting minutes. Would that change?
Second.
Mr. DePinto, second.
Miss Krab. Roll call vote.
Mr. Bafta.
Yes.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes.
Mr. Vashada.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mr. Sayak.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Rukuya.
Yes.
Mr. Krab.
Yes.
And Mr. Mackinon.
Yes, our student council representative report.
Currently, we are preparing for pep rally and homecoming, which we're going to hold on Friday, October 19th. Like I said at the last meeting, student council will only be selling one shirt for all classes this year. We finalized the design that would be tie-in with two colors for all four classes, and we expect the shipping by Monday. Furthermore, the theme for this year's homecoming will be bright lights, big cities, and our first of the council meeting will be held on Wednesday.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for comment? Thank you. No highlights, Mr. President. Okay, Dr. O'Fannal, please take this to your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mackinon. My report against buildings and grounds, the code for violence and vandalism report, which will be presented by Mrs. Sayak.
Every year in October.
Every other microphone works.
Every year in October, we're required to report on the incidence of violence and vandalism. In the past, we always had to do it by the entire year, but for the 11, 12 school year, we were required to divide it from September through December and then January through June. So we actually have two separate totals here, okay? So, Section A is count of incidents or reporting category. For the first half of the year, we had 66 incidents of violence, and for the second half, we have 72 vandalism. It was two incidents for the first part of the year, and six for the second part. Weapons, it was one in the first half, and then two substance abuse. We had five incidents from September through December, and then 14 from January through June. And the totals were 73 for the first half, and 94 for the second half, for a total of 167 incidents for the entire school year. And then it's broken down into the cost of vandalism, actions taken, whether or not police were notified, and whether or not a complaint was filed, consequences for students, if they were in-school suspension or out-of-school suspensions, and then information about the offenders, the victims, school personnel, and so on. Does anyone have any questions about that part of the report? Okay. Moving along, the second part is related to our harassment, intimidation, and bullying summary report. In May or June, we gave it for the first half of the year last year. This is the report for the second half of the year. Count of HIB incidents were 46. All the investigations were completed, and the Board of Education decisions were rendered for all 46. Section B describes the nature of the incidents. Section C breaks down the effects of the HIB incidents. Section D is the mode, whether it was a gesture, written, verbal, physical, or electronic Section E is the disciplinary action taken. And then section F, or the other disciplinary actions that were taken. Does anyone have any questions regarding to that report? Okay.
Is that just for us or for the public?
For anyone.
For anyone, for the public.
Yes.
Okay, number three, page six, that's a use of a building on a Saturday for a very nice program that we're running at the Samson Harper Elementary School on discovery education. Also, there is a several War Memorial High School football stadium that's to be used on October 21st for the several leprechaun playoff games. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to finance, except a donation of dictionaries called Dictionary Project. This is, Mr. Paul, every year, the Rotary Club donates these dictionaries, I believe it's to grade three, every year, and since I've been here, I think it's at least 10 years they've been doing this. So I've been here for 10 years, and I've accepted this donation. I want to thank them publicly. Also, there's a lease agreement for Pitney Bow, and there's one additional resolution on this section on the finance, and this will be number three. Whereas the Saraval Board of Education has been made aware of allegations pertaining to fiscal irregularities within a student activities sub-account, and whereas the board seeks to investigate said allegations and, if necessary, take corrective action, and whereas, in view of the foregoing, the board seeks particular information and records, and now therefore be it resolved that the Saraval Board of Education hereby directs that further investigation into the alleged improprieties be implemented immediately, and to that end, direct the board attorney to prepare and cause to be served all necessary subpoenas pursuant to NJSA 18A 6-20 to compel the production of various documentation as deemed appropriate by the board attorney. Any questions with Section B finances?
Dr. O'Fannal, on item number two, with regard to the mailing machine, have we ever looked, or do we plan to look as a district about, you know, the amount of mailing machines we have, photocopiers, to see if there's a way that we can maybe streamline our processes so that we can cut down on some of the equipment that we have throughout the district? We've grown, I'm sure we've added copiers, is there an efficiency mechanism or efficiency study that we can go through and take a look at as a way that we can streamline this?
I was asked the same thing to Mr. DeAndrea when this came up, and we'll take a look at that, and I think it's a good idea, but at this point right now, I think this is necessary because of the volume in that particular building. So, we do want to consolidate, and obviously, our goal is to try to save as much money as we possibly can and be as efficient. But, Mr. DeAndrea, we'll take a look at that, and down the road, we'll take another look at all of these machines and copying machines and everything.
Okay.
So is this a new system, something we didn't have before?
This is new.
This is random. Did we budget for this?
No, but they, they're going to use our other money from our supplies and things to purchase it with the moving of.
Well, you do have.
What do they have now?
You do have some stamps that.
They go into the post office.
Oh, they're using like regular?
Yeah, they use a regular stamps, which in a long.
So they have no mailing machine at all?
No.
And it's maybe shared with the special services department that they are also.
So they share a copy?
Yeah.
And that's where a bulk of the mail comes from, the special services. Moving to C, personnel non-certified retirement, Carol Sue Ambrosia, Secretary, I want to wish her very well. I know Carol Sue, through the time I've been here, this is my 13th year, Carol's always been very professional, and she worked in the building for many years when I was here at Slover. She had to come to me personally, drop off her retirement papers, and I want to wish her well, and I wish her a very healthy retirement. Second is professional days, it's listed, and prove the employment of a maintenance worker and some substitutes. Any questions with Section C?
Number three, we're bringing in step nine, is that complete with the proper bargaining use? Is that an issue?
You don't require any bargaining, you can deal with the new contract and everything, so yes, it's fine.
Moving to Section D, certified personnel, we have a resignation of a coaching position, one, two, three, pregnancy leaves, to approve two individuals to take on the district-wide power school coordinators, which will split the cost. There's a salary adjustment for credit for degree, of degree. Number seven on page nine is a few appointments, open slots that we have. Ms. Cordare is going to be our in-school suspension program person for the middle school. Number E, middle school co-curricular advisors as listed, and professional days, which run from pages nine, 10, and 11, and you have substitute teachers as well as substitute nurses on page 11. Any questions with Section D?
I have a question, Dr. O'Fannal. Number E, did we always have that? Was that something that?
We always have it.
Okay, so we're just replacing?
Correct.
Okay.
We usually wait till October, because the season doesn't start for in-school suspension, basically, until October. So the floodgates are over now. Policy, there is no report. F, curriculum, harassment, intimidation, bullying reports, numbers one through five. Board of Education, new courses in language arts literacy in grades four, five, seven, and eight. We skipped six. Retroactively, we're going to approve the BASS program, which has been in the district as long as I've been here, so they've been here a very long time, and they do a very nice job as our after-school program. PTO, kindergarten parents, social at Truman School, snow deed for an activity, I guess they were concerned that it snowed, they wanted to get the deed, and this is a phonic, invitational, which they're concerned about, obviously, it's snow in January. Moving along, on page 13, is the variety show that Mr. Vashada had asked about, and it's usually, it's always on around the beginning of March, so I, Mr. Brown, immediately once he heard that, he got it into the report. PTO family, movie night in Truman School is listed, blood drive, which is run predominantly by Mrs. Denise Krab, does a great job, is listed, dream for kids, it's really a great program, and I think this is going to national council alcohol and drug dependence, and there's a whole bunch of things that are going on with the Save Club, and some very worthwhile function, and somebody, if they're lucky enough, hits the shot, a $10,000 shot, somebody's going to get real happy. Moving along, building schools club, and heroes to the Heroes Club, two new clubs that will be approved, astronomy night, which is Wednesday, November 14th, which is at Samson Harper Elementary School, and it's usually very good evening, tap dance fundraiser from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the center, the dance floor, the 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th, adult tap dance. High school guidance department is running a career council college fair to build and prioritize the students for the variety of colleges and vocational schools, which is on the 24th of October. The high school choir is going to perform at Borough Hall on Saturday, October 5th, during that particular time, for the memorial of Vietnam War casualties. Middle school activities as listed, three events are listed. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to H, support services, waive some transportation, some additional routes, a number of field trips that will be approved, and on number four on page 17, the Red Cross Club community program, which is listed, particular dates for functions are listed as such. That concludes my report.
Any questions from the Board of Comments on the Agenda before I open up to the public?
I have a question. Are we going to do sixth grade curriculum, or is that one not going to be remunerated?
If it might already be done, if not, it might not have been submitted yet.
Any questions? Seeing the hearing done, it's just I might open up to the public. Any questions or comments on the Agenda items only that we just discussed, be mindful, I will open up again for the public, for any business that may come across the boards at this time. Anybody have any questions, comments on the Agenda items? If you do, please come up, state your name and address for the record. That's not, that'll be under discussion, Mr. Mackinon. We're going to get that.
Is it still online or?
No, we're going to open up again. This is just for the Agenda only, so we can approve and file the Agenda. Any motion to accept and file this with the tenor's report? I need a second.
Second.
I need a roll call vote.
Mr. Bafta.
Yes.
Mrs. Sayak.
Yes.
Mr. Vashada.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mr. Sayak.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Rukuya.
Yes.
Mrs. Krab.
Yes.
And Mr. Mackinon.
Yes. Delegate to New Jersey School Boards Association, Mr. Sayak.
Okay, a couple of updates. Several board members have asked me about the schedule for the annual conference. The conference begins on Tuesday, October 23rd, the exhibit floor opens at 9 o'clock. There's action labs and workshops the entire day. It kicks off with a workshop entitled, "Plan for Raising Student Achievement." Introduction of Association Officers are at 11:15 with the Teacher of the Year, and also National School Boards Association President Ed Massey will give his keynote address. In the afternoon, there's sessions on effective grievance handling and increasing student achievement and enriching the learning experience with in-class video. On Wednesday, October 24th, the exhibit floor is open again at 9:00 a.m., it's open all day. There's more sessions on student achievement, there's a keynote speaker at 10:15 named Billy Riggs, who's going to speak on the magic of education. On Thursday, the exhibit floor is not open, Thursday is only a half-day. For those of us taking Governance 4, that session will be held at 9:30, Governance 3 at 10:00 a.m., and Governance 2 at 10:30. And there's some additional sessions for anyone who does not have mandatory training.
So all Thursdays mandatory training?
All Thursdays mandatory training.
Are they going to send out that brochure they send out every year that has all this information what the action labs are?
It'll probably be sent out through email, and it is actually available on the website. If you go onto NJSPA.org, the banner, just click on Workshop, and you can see the schedule. This is exactly where I pulled this up.
But usually they send out the brochure.
Okay, so either one will work. NJSPA also hired its new executive director, Dr. Larry Feinsberg, who will be beginning the end of October. He's a former school board member, former superintendent, former executive county superintendent, and one of the founders of the Garden State Coalition of Schools. I also attended the National School Boards Association Board of Directors meeting in Boone County, Kentucky, and I had an opportunity to have lunch with the Kentucky Secretary of Education and Workforce Development. And two things were striking. First of all, I liked how Kentucky linked the Secretary of Education together with workforce development, because that's really what we're doing here, you know, we're educating our children in order to not only make them good citizens, but also develop this nation's workforce and develop this nation's economy. And I know that we, as a board, discussed a while ago, school lunch. We had lunch in the cafeteria, and it was in elementary school, so we had hot dogs and french fries, which is exactly what the students were eating, and it tasted exactly like school lunch did about 30 years ago. The other piece that I found interesting from speaking with the secretary was when they fund education in Kentucky, they've actually developed a flat rate for the amount of funding that each district should get, and then based upon the economy of that district and the property values, they're responsible for a certain proportion of that full funding. So you don't have districts in Kentucky like the Jersey Cities or the Camdens who get a significantly larger share of state funding, or actually, a significantly larger share of total funding versus other districts, because they've set a, basically, a cap. We didn't get a chance to discuss that detail, but I thought it was a much different funding formula than what we have in New Jersey. And the other thing I learned about Kentucky is that their graduates are actually one of their largest exports, because 41% of their college graduates actually need the state to go someplace else. And that concludes my report.
Under discussion, Dr. O'Fannal, do you want to cover that? I think we have.
Yes, Mr. Mackinon, I would like to make a recommendation to the board regarding Regulation 1330 to allow Asia, the group Asia, to use the SUES, and to use their open, with their ceremonies, some open candles that are approximately half a dollar in size, and they, from my discussion with Mr. Shaw, they're probably going to use between 20 and 30 of them, and I support them. They put in a security deposit, or will, we'll run that also by, make sure the fire marshal, as well as the insurance company is notified. But I don't see really any particular concern about it, it's the ceremony itself is about 15 minutes, it's towards the end of the ceremony, and according to the regulation that was supplied so nicely to me from Mr. Sayak, that it allows me to sort of amend it, and I made the recommendation to be able to do that.
I think we have represented it, and one of the priests mentioned something about Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Kennedy O'Brien, Six Marchus Street, Parland. Mr. Chairman, thank you, Superintendent, thank you for allowing us to come here. Asia is the Association of Saraval Indian Americans, I'm a founding member of it, and have been going to it for a good dozen or so years. Every October, there are two festivals held on consecutive weekends called the Bhatri, which is a dance, and at the, towards the latter part of the evening, there is a prayer ceremony called RT. And for those of you who don't know, Hinduism is a religion which dates back more than 6,000 years, so RT is part of that, and in Hinduism, there are many gods. This particular celebration has to, is really commemorating a nine-day battle between, Phil, you'll like this, the goddess of light defeated the god, the god of darkness, and at the end of nine days, she won the. I do feel that's a lot. But, and that's really what the celebration commemorates, and about 800 people can rotate through there, everything from infants to grandparents. It's a family affair. In the dozen or more years that I've gone, I have never, ever experienced an incident of any kind, nor have I ever seen any problems with the candles, but getting back, RT is the prayer ceremony where these candles are used, and just for the record, the double A, RT is spelled double A, RTI. The double A means towards or to, and the RT means right or virtue, so it's towards virtue, towards goodness. And one is, light is, in this part of the world, flame is very significant in religion. It embodies, embodies life, the sun, the universe, the stars, it is everything that represents goodness and virtue in man. So, in this ceremony, the candles are really wicks that have been fit to either ghee, which is really clarified butter, it's used in Indian cooking, or camphor, and it's used during really a 15-minute prayer that is done by everyone. And at the end of, at the end of the prayer, the candle is extinguished, and then you wave, you wave it towards you, it's part of the ritual of cleansing and seeking of virtue. So, when this was originally not allowed several years ago, some of my friends from Asia brought me up to a high school in Elizabeth, where they're having a Bhatri celebration, and that gymnasium is, three gymnasies, it's huge, and there were 10 times as many people, and there were 25, you know, hundreds of these candles being used because of the other people. And I'm looking at this, and I'm like, you know, Elizabeth doesn't have a problem, I think it's just, this hasn't been explained properly here in Saraval, so let's take this opportunity to explain it, and the importance of it, and the significance of it in the practice of the Hindu religion. So I would ask you, now that it has been explained, to consider doing the right thing. These are our friends and our neighbors, and children attend our school in great numbers, and they are a very constructive part of our community.
Phil, did you want to say anything?
No, I just want to, okay, you need to say your name.
Yeah, sure. My name is Bharat, also known as El, last and today living at 115 Wall Street. I immigrated from India 30 years ago, and I'm living here as a citizen of the United States. The day I was here, not a single day, I went out without having prayer, and we do RT every day, in the morning and evening at home. I would like to say that most of all Hindu families, even though they have a wooden house, they do light a candle, keep it for two minutes, and that is the religious ritual thing, which is, gives us a strength to live in this type of world. And that is, I told, because my grandfather was doing, and my father was doing, but when this thing happened, Mayor explained, very good, thank you, Mayor, but that's the one thing, when I was, to say why we are not doing, then we said why we cannot represent this thing to Board of Education, so you, the person who don't know, or doesn't know anything about this one, they know that what is this is meaning to us, and it's very important for our life, our religious, and everyone, and also for our community. So I request you to give us permission, and we will definitely make sure that somebody keep eye all the time, the way we do at home.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Just so that you know, there's two nights, October 29th and 27th.
The building is, use is already approved, so any board members have any?
I have a question.
Yes.
I thought Dr. O'Fannal said 25 to 30 candles, they're saying 800 people, will all 800 people be lighting candles?
No. Actually, the person who is standing in the front, they have a candle, they just pass it on one by one person, and it's only going in a circle in the front, it's not going in the back.
So how many people will be handling your handle?
Oh, the person who is coming from back and just handle, and then hand it to the other person. It's a big tray, but it's a small candle inside.
In the center of the gym, in the U A S school, will be where the goddess resides, right? And at the appropriate time, all of us surrounded, the candles are lit, and the praying begins. So you rotate towards the goddess, you and probably three or four other people are holding the tray that these little candles are in, and you're moving it to the music of the prayer. After a few moments, you step back, and the next person moves in, so it rotates through. You're not having 800 people holding a tray of candles. As I said, in Elizabeth, you wouldn't see. As I said, in Elizabeth, you would see hundreds of candles, because there are thousands and thousands and thousands of people at the celebration.
So you see like five to 10 trays, and like five to 10 people passing it around?
Definitely. It's like, I would say, like, when we have 800 people, I would say like 10 to 15, but it is going hand to hand, and we are not going to put it on anywhere on the floor or nothing. So we make sure that it is in a hand, I'm sorry.
No.
Thank you for explaining it.
But at the end, at the end of the prayer, you extinguish the candles, and the smoke that rises, you then bring over you through your hair. It hasn't worked yet, and I'm still not virtuous, but I go over here hoping...
So all 800 people do that? All the 800 people, it's yours to handle?
No, some people, they really want to do, because there's so many people. So whoever in the front, they just do it. But at the end, you know, like what Mayor said, like everybody come and take the place of the...
We are the only, we are the only place in the state of New Jersey that does not allow this religious ritual. The single, only place in the state. It's not...
So all you're asking then is, the candle is a problem with the policy? So all the buildings...
Yeah, I'm just waving that, right.
The policy said, you know, that...
It says only 12.
Open flames, and it had 12 candles.
It must be secure.
And they're just asking, since this is a sacred, we'd really like to be able, wait that the superintendent has the...
I check with the fire marshal every year, and they don't have a check.
Does anybody on the board have any...
No, I appreciate the explanation, I thank him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, there's no other discussion, Mr. Mack?
I have two things, please.
I think since you're waving your policy, you should do, you should do a roll call.
I'll make a motion to waive...
Tom Holland, did you have a question concerning...
No, not to this. If we do this resolution...
Okay, need a motion to accept the...
I'll make a motion to waive Regulation 1330, Provision Number 29 with regard to candles.
I need a second?
Second.
Okay, need a roll call vote?
Second is Mrs. Strapp?
Or Rakuya.
Mr. Valtke? Mrs. Backo?
Yes.
Mr. Bishada?
Yes.
Mr. Brodzinski?
Yes.
Mr. Sayak?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Rakuya?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes. Mr. Bishada, you had a question?
There's two things. First of all, I don't know if anyone is aware of it, there's a bill pending in committee in the Senate in New Jersey right now by Shirley Turner, that she wants to extend the school year and the school hours that students go to school. It was announced, I caught this on 101.5 one morning, I was listening to it, and this is what her proposals are, again, extending the school year, which is going to create a lot of difficulties with air conditioning, et cetera, because of the heat temperatures. And again, they extended school year, school day. The other thing, I mentioned to Mr. Sayak about this, I'm glad the reporter is here, and Mr. Mayor, you're here also. There's bills sitting in our Assembly and in our Senate here in New Jersey. This is a date, it was in a Home lose Tribune article on August 30th. I'm repeating myself. The bills' number are A 367 slash S 213. What these bills do is they allow, again, I'm repeating myself from the last meeting, but I think it's very important, to, for our seniors to cut their education costs at half. In other words, say for example, instead of paying, which the average is 67% of your tax dollars, go for education that the town collects. That would be reduced by half. And in other words, what this will do is it'll keep our seniors fluent and keep them in the state of New Jersey, not forcing them to sell their equity in their homes and move out of state. And the monies that would support this will come out of the casino revenue fund, it will not come out of the state treasury. I think it's something that we all should look into and get our Assembly and our Senator, and even our Governor involved in this, to protect our seniors and keep them here in our state, not forcing people to move to the Carolinas or Virginia, or wind up going someplace that they're not, giving up their families and their life because they can't afford to stay here.
Do Jersey School Boards pick up on this?
No, actually, I spoke to Mr. Bishada before, and I'm just looking at my BlackBerry right now, because I wanted to see if I had an update. New Jersey School Boards has not taken a position on the bill, and I asked why, and I just got this answer from our Director of Governmental Relations. He says, this bill has been around for a while. Simply put, this bill assumes the casino revenue fund can cover these costs. That revenue stream has declined dramatically over the last five years. In order to support this added burden, someone in Treasury would have to decide whether prescription drug assistance and help for high-fuel bills for senior and disabled citizens funded from the same source could continue. So it sounds like the reason that we haven't taken a position on it is because it's a question of whether or not the fund can support it, and if we do decide to use that money for education, it would end up hurting the senior citizens and the disabled anyway, because it would come from other programs that help them. Now, again, that's just a quick answer that I got at 6:13 tonight, but I can certainly dig into it more.
If you recall, in Atlantic City, first opened in the 70s, that was the answer, that that was going to be for education. That was the same argument when the lottery came, that that was going to be for education.
But the issue is, again, they've been robbing Peter and Paypall for so many years that...
Right.
You can't live beyond your means, and that's one of the things that we've done in this state, is live beyond our means.
Okay, no other board discussion at this time?
One more. Dr. Alpano, if you could just bring us up to speed with regard to the new evaluation regulations. I know there are two October 31 deadlines, one is on the forming of the committee, the other is on training the principals on the evaluation process. I think we're ahead in some areas and on track in others?
Yes, we still have to create the committee by October 31st, which we shall do, and it has to have all stakeholders, whether they be parents, SCA members in regard to this evaluation, to see how the model is being used and so on and so forth. We're way ahead of the state, we've already been using a multi-tiered rubric that has four different categories, which is distinguished, proficient, basic, and unsatisfactory, which resembles the Danielson model. We also have a walkthrough model that we've been agonizing over again, which we've been using for a couple of years, and we're revising it again to try to make it more user-friendly and so on and so forth, that it can be used for both coaching, as well as being used for a formative type of, an analysis that we can use, so that we can get some statistical information. So the only thing that we need to do, and we've also been training the principals on the use of the model, we've really been very successful with it so far. We're also now looking at the principal model, which is due, I believe, at the end of this school year. So we have to have a multi-tiered, four-dimensional, just like we do for the teachers. I believe Mr. Agulhas is in the process of going October 16th to what is called the Strong Model, and November 30th, I think it is, or 20th, which is five other models that we'll take a look at. We did a webinar the other day in regards to the Danielson model, that also has a principal model with it as well. So it has the four tiers, and it has the rubric for each of the different categories that coordinate with the standards set up by the national and the state that deal with all the different standards that the principals need to comply with. So as far as I'm concerned, I think we're doing very well. I know we have to get that committee established, which we're in the process of doing, but that's the last thing really we need to do. And I'm happy to say we are far ahead of most districts, and we've been utilizing the fourth-tiered district, not the fourth-tiered evaluation process, probably for the last year or so.
And we're getting an update at our next meeting on the evaluation process itself, that that will be the collecting... There's something, I know, there's a presentation coming up.
No, no, the next presentation is required of all the testing information.
And the strategic plan?
That's part of the strategic plan, that's the first part of it. The second part of the strategic plan, which is the standard base, which is all the benchmarks, will be in November, that we will have the committee come in and we'll do that. The first part of it is just to give you a synopsis of how we did from an assessment perspective, like we always do each year, which is part of the strategic plan, it's the first part of performance. The second part is all the standards, the five standards that we have, and the 82 benchmarks that go along with those standards.
Any other questions?
Can I just make a comment?
I have a question.
I just would like to make a comment. As many of you know here who helped or participated, we had the Run for Rob fundraiser over the weekend, and it was a very good success, it was very well-intended, but I would like to publicly thank our baseball coach, Mike Novak, and the Booster Club. Without their support, it just would not have been possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mack. At this time, I do open up to the public for any business that may have come forward this board. If you have any questions about anything, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll take a motion for adjournment.